Good evening, and welcome. I call to order the special meeting of the Engle Cliffs Borough Council and Mayor Meeting. Today is March 20, 2017, at 6:12 PM. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Kranjak.
Here.
Councilperson Deversa. E. Park.
Here.
O.
Here.
McMorro.
Here.
M. Park.
Here.
Woo.
Here.
Borough Attorney.
Present.
Borough Administrator.
Yeah.
Municipal Clerk. Everyone's President, Mayor, except Councilman Deversa.
Thank you. Everybody, please stand and salute the flag of our great country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act Statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you very much. We don't have anything for closed session today, so we will go down to the next part of our agenda, which is public portion. I'd like to have our Borough Council, Enry Rizuto, say a few words before we do that.
Yes, council members and members of the public. In reviewing our procedures under our bylaws and under Robert's rules as the current edition, I want to remind the council members that any matters that are not on the agenda need to be brought up during the unfinished or new business matter section rather than jumping into the very beginning of a meeting. So I caution you that if something is out of order on the agenda, I will interrupt and defer your statements or requests to the proper portion of the meeting. And the other thing I'd like the council members to know, which I'm sure you do know, and members of the public, and particularly with respect to any questions about the budget. The members of the public are allowed to request information, ask questions, and the council members are not required to answer or provide those answers in response to your question at the moment you may be standing up. So to eliminate back and forth discussion, and sometimes worse than discussion, I am recommending and suggesting that responses with respect to comments of the public can be made during your portion of the meeting when you give a committee report, or, for example, when we are discussing the ordinances, council members can reply to any questions about the ordinance, when we are discussing the budget, when you are, when you as a council member are responding. That is a good time to respond. But I do want to try to limit back and forth discussion because it seems to disrupt the meeting in too much of a way. So while I understand, and all the council members understand, that you're asking questions because you want answers, and I certainly think your council members may defer to their later section in the meeting, or it might have to be deferred to the next meeting if we need to gather further information about that. So thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a motion from a council member to open the meeting?
No.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Does anyone from the public wishes to be heard? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
So Mr. Barrie, I asked if I could. I've got a chance to review. I'm not going to, I really can't ask questions about the budget. Is there going to be a time where the public will have a chance to review this, where we can ask questions? Would that be at the next meeting? The budget?
It'll be at, well, go ahead.
The next, the next meeting is the official public hearing for the budget, and certainly questions can be asked at any council meeting before or after that.
Okay. So that, that will be the next meeting?
We do have a meeting in between.
We have a meeting. Okay. So I can come at that meeting, but the ordinance won't be at that meeting?
Not that I know of.
Not at the 12.
Not at the 12.
Okay. I have a question. I want to thank you for getting back to me on my own work request. It was, it was part of it. I'm still missing the part that I wanted, which was the monetary value. I did get the assessment reductions, but it doesn't equate to dollars, and it says how it will be paid. But it was only one that wasn't going to be paid via credit on future taxes, and they were going to get half of whatever that monetary amount was, it didn't say, after April 15. So I'd just like to know where that is in this budget, because I just want to feel comfortable that it is accounted for here. So I will be answering that now. I haven't looked at the document, but I've got it, so.
You're going to be answering everything afterwards, yeah?
During the budget discussion, yeah, I'm sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard? Yes, sir.
Hi, Mr. Yano Lordra. We, as we, first off, I'm a little concerned that you're not going to answer questions until, even on the meeting, it seems kind of bizarre that you're going to ask questions and not going to be able to respond. Because if you have a response, you should respond and not wait until somewhere down the meeting. Maybe I got to leave, and then I don't get a response. I think it's ridiculous, but that's just me. I'd like to know if we established a cap bank previously? Have we utilized a cap bank in this, in this budget? I see that you're going to do a, a first reading of an ordinance for a cap bank, so I'm not sure if that means that there was a cap bank previously. And are we utilizing any of the cap bank in this, in this budget, which then changes the figures from three and a half percent to whatever we're drawing down on the cap bank, if that's true, which I don't know, and I guess I don't expect an answer? Is there any way we could get a copy of, I know you guys consider it work papers, but I imagine your work papers are now done? Can I see, during your budget process, there's requests being made by department heads. I'd like to see what the requests that were made and what was finalized in the budget. Because this document isn't going to tell me that. It's going to tell me what's expensed, it's going to tell me what's reserved, it's going to not tell me that the DPW requested $500,000 to be road improvements, and you only approved 100. I'm making up numbers. So you're not being held to numbers and just making them up. But I'd really like to know, and I think we should know, what the requests were from the department heads, because maybe then we can formulate a question as to what was your thinking, as to why the requests weren't authorized. And maybe there's valid reasons. And believe me, I sat up there, and I appreciate everything you do. Thank you. I know it's off here. Thankless job. But I think it's important. It's important for us, as the general public and the taxpayers, to know. And like I said, you know, I, you get a request that might be numbers that they're pulling the rabbit out of the hat, but I think during the process, it would be nice to know. Are you going to reopen after the introduction of the budget for questions, if I'm looking at this document? Or is that just an introduction, and now we have to ask our questions right now?
Now is the opportunity for the public to ask questions.
Even on an ordinance?
I'm sorry, the ordinance is for the cap reading? The cap?
Well, you're doing a budget introduction, a resolution, right?
Right. Introduction.
This is the time to ask the question.
This is the time to ask your question.
The ordinance's second reading?
Second reading is asking questions as well.
Okay. Lordra, definitely, there now, if you're on spot, please. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I've noted all five of your questions.
Sure.
Is there anyone else in the public?
No.
Okay, do you have a motion to close the public portion?
No.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. There was no correspondence for the period, and we're up to the first reading of 17-04 now. Ordinance to exceed budget and establish cap bank. Madam Clerk, would you?
Yes. First reading, ordinance to exceed budget and establish a cap bank with a public hearing on April 18, 2017. We need a motion, please.
So.
A second?
Uh huh.
Councilperson E. Park.
Can I ask a question if I vote? Not, I don't believe under Robert's rules, council.
Let me defer to council.
I'm sorry, do you have a question, you guys? The ordinance, yes. Go ahead. So it, just so that we're on the same page, we're going to follow. I just want to know if we're.
We're in the middle of voting.
We're in the middle of voting.
Do you want to, do you want to call for discussion before you vote?
Yeah, call.
Well, we already, we didn't do that.
We already did a motion to vote. Right. I just said, listen, we're going to follow Robert's rules.
Robert's rules is once they start voting, we vote.
Yes, that's correct. Do you want to defer to a discussion before that, or no?
No.
Okay.
Can I make a motion for discussion, then, after the second of your motion?
You can make a motion later, but we're not indicating the motions right now.
You just want me to vote?
You can second my motion for discussion.
Well, we're in the middle of voting.
No, Robert's rules is you do one thing at a time. This is what we're doing right now.
Okay, so if you want me to vote without having a discussion, then I'm going to abstain from ordinance, the first ordinance.
Okay. O.
No.
Yes.
M. Park.
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Mayor, there's three yeses.
Thank you.
Again, with a public hearing of April 18.
Right. Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record ordinance 17-05, first reading?
17-05, with a public hearing of April 12, which is our next regular mayor and council meeting. Ordinance, 2017-05, an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Engle Cliffs to add provisions for use of recreational facilities and requested permits. I need a motion, please.
So.
Need a second?
Second.
Your vote, please.
E. Park? O.
Yes.
McMorro.
Yes.
M. Park.
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
It passes, Mayor.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the 2017 budget introduction. It's Resolution 17-63. Public hearing, and that's probably on April 18, 2017.
Correct. Wanting a motion?
Do you have a motion?
So.
Hope?
Okay, Mayor. I'm supposed to.
Oh, you definitely said that? All right, so we're in a discussion.
No, we're not. I'm doing an introduction.
So introduce it.
Okay, well, you have to, I have to be recognized, yep.
I recognize you. All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. 2017 budget introduction. Tonight, I am introducing our 2017 municipal budget. These numbers only reflect the municipal portion of your property tax bill. Urban housing and the Board of Education's tax portions of your bill, while on your tax bill, are not determined by the mayor and council. Our total appropriations for 2017 are $17,102,260.13. In an effort to increase our services and improvements and remain incognizant of the impact to our property owners, it was an extremely difficult budget to put together. We have been working on this budget since the beginning of January, and I would like to thank all our department heads and staff for all their help, input, and assistance in the gathering of information to allow me the opportunity to complete and present it on behalf of the Borough of Engle Cliffs. A tremendous amount of effort was put into finding out, finding out what was truly needed in these line items within each department, and to assess what our needs are, which includes our needs in operating and capital improvements. This budget process was completely transparent, and I shared my information with the council as it was developing through several council meetings. Council members were given the opportunity to express any concerns or input that they had, and were encouraged to email or call me with any questions on many occasions. I am happy to report that no one had any concerns regarding the budget, other than questions clarifying some line items or numbers on specific sheet pages, including capital projects, and I am hopeful that this is a sign of support for this budget that I am introducing tonight. As I reported at last month's caucus meeting, according to records provided by the auditor and CFO, the total assessment of the Borough of Engle Cliffs for 2017 went down $5,584,828, which on an average assessed home value at $1,274,000 comes to a $50 a house tax increase. Secondly, the increase in the value of the average assessed home for 2017 comes to an additional $8 a house tax increase. So, simply said, this year, we are starting out with a $58 tax increase on an average assessed home before working on the budget, a number which is out of our control. That, along with state mandates, contractual obligations, and our goals for the future of our community, and remain cognizant of the impact to our residents, we were able to achieve all this and keep our budget's tax increase to $48 per average assessed home of $1,274,000. Those two numbers equals a total of $106 municipal tax increase for an average assessed home of $1,274,000, which would equal an increase of $8.83 a month.
Mayor, we have a second? We had a second, but, yeah?
You're still going, right?
I was.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I apologize.
That's okay. I'm just presenting all the information, and I know that all the council members were given everything, but I'm just trying to make it as easy as possible for everyone. And I thank those of you that did reach out to me and had questions, and I hope that I was able to provide you everything you needed. So I can tell you, Mayor, that the differential between 2017 and 2016 came to 763, and this is a differential in appropriations, came to a total of $763,413. So I'm just going to do this quickly, Mayor, for the members of the audience and the council, if they didn't, okay?
Yeah.
If they, if they didn't already do the numbers themselves, then we'll figure this time enough to help, help me with this and work together on.
Okay.
Okay, our reserve from, for uncollected taxes in 2017 went to $816,000, which is a differential from 2016 of $316,000. Our, our insurances and litigation costs went from, in 2017, to $510,000, where in 2016 it was $472,500, a differential of $37,500. Our group insurance for 2017 was $1,600,000, and that's a differential from 2016, which cost us $1,530,200, of $69,800. In 2017, our land use board outside expenses went up to $49,800, where in 2016 it was $19,600, a differential of $30,200. Terminal leave for a Sheet 15A in 2017 is 40, and in 2016 it was $19,500, with a differential of $20,500. Terminal leave for the Police Department, Sheet 13, 2017 is $188,000, in 2016 it was $58,000, differential of $130,000. 2017's PFRS, which is the face and fire pension, in 2017 it was $904,413, in 2016 it was $891,000, differential of $13,413. Tax appeals in 2017, 2017 we have allotted $147,000, and in 2016's budget, there was $100 allotted, differential of $47,000. 2017, our accumulated absences line, we have $50,000. In 2016, we only had $1,000, differential of $49,000. And in 2017, our capital improvement fund line is $100,000, and in 2016 it was only $50,000, a differential of $50,000. So that's how you, if you total those numbers, Mayor, you get a total of, of an increase of $763,413. That, in conjunction with a loss in court revenues, which the auditor brought to all of our attention at our February 27 meeting, we lost $100,000 in court revenues. So that number was already at, then, if you add the $100,000 to the 763,413, you have So, you know, like I said, that's, that says a lot right there with those numbers that I, that I gave to you, majority of which are numbers that are beyond our control, other than capital improvement funds. So, you know, our revenues were improved, and our spending has become more efficient, Mayor. And with that.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, well, I don't, I thank the audience for their questions. I don't know, I will, I will look up or see if I can get the number from Mr. Savary on the head course, and I don't have that number with me. I'll see if I can receive that, or get that. We can't create a document for Oprah, but if I can find that dollar amount or calculate it.
I'm just waiting for the ballot.
I'm, I'm, my understanding is that it was in the budget, that that number is in the budget, but I will verify that. And I'll ask, I'll defer to the Borough Clerk on the answer, as a cap bank established previously, since she.
We did one last year.
We did one last year, and I believe we do one every year, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Submitted to us by the auditor.
We do one every year, right? So that, okay, thank you, Lizeth, for verifying. Are we using, utilizing any of the cap bank? My answer is no, we are not. Okay. Thank you, Catherine. But therefore, we are not. We are.
The documents are supposed to.
Previous cap bank you're saying?
The current cap bank you have, you have established 117. On page 3B, looks at the cap bank. The cap, 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 cap.
He thinks that's just using.
Yeah, that's, he's not here tonight, so I don't want to, I, yeah.
Now, if you're not using prior groups.
Right. And that, those are the only questions I can answer.
Okay. All right. And we'll get the answers to the other questions for the next meeting. I thank Councilwoman McMorro for an excellent job chairing the Finance Committee, and I thank Catherine and Lizeth. William Rule was very active as well in terms of creating this budget, especially on the public safety side. So I think what we have here is an excellent budget, getting us to where we need to be as a borough, like I always said. My intention is to be the best town in New Jersey, but while on our way.
Is there a reason why the professionals are not here today?
Well, need an introduction.
An introduction.
I'll say they're not here. So with that said, Mayor, I would like to make a motion.
Yes. Please make a motion.
Discussion?
Yes.
Do you have questions on what I've stated?
I have a question on the, on the budget, yeah.
Okay. I didn't hear from you at all. At the last meeting, I said, do you have any questions?
I know, but I've been tremendously, I've been trying, and you've been giving me the arguments, I understand. I have tons of questions, I look through everything, and I, you know, but.
Right.
We're here now, and I just have two questions.
Okay. All questions are okay, but in an effort to get you the answers that you may need, questions, especially for something as important as a budget, really should be emailed or, you know, so that, I don't carry everything with me.
What I would also add is that we, we as a council are a committee of the whole, and so, you know, we would have anticipated having questions from you before tonight. You could ask your questions. If we can answer them now, we will. If not, you'll have to write like the rest of the public.
That's fine.
But you are a council member now, so.
I, I understand, but.
We expect, we expect real time with, with the council members.
Okay. Well, so I just have a question regarding the, the general capital fund balance. I know last was 5,000, now I see 273,000?
Right.
Right. So what, what is the general capital fund balance? Okay, but that happens to be a good question, and Councilwoman O'Callaghan, that exact same question, and that's on Sheet. Do you have it open, Council?
I have.
No, do you have the, do you happen to know that Sheet number there? I believe it's, yeah.
I think 10.
10? Oh, thank you. Thank you all. Thank you very much. It's on Sheet 10. If you could all turn to Sheet 10 for a moment. The, the general capital fund balance, and Catherine, let me if I make a mistake, but how it was explained to me. Part of the CFO's communications in putting the budget together, he looks through any of the ordinances and checks with the, with the clerk administrator to see if there are any projects that have been completed that are still on the books, that need, that bank can be canceled if there's money in there. The, that was done last year. As a result of what was done last year, and what was canceled because the projects were completed, there was a total, and I don't have that exact number, but it was 500 and some odd thousand. I can get you that exact number.
But it's a certain.
Out of that, out of that money, recommendation of the, of our administrator, and speaking with the auditor and the CFO, that was the number.
Yeah.
That they decided that they were comfortable with to put into this budget.
Right.
The reason you see 5,000 last year is because there were, when you cancel an ordinance, you can't use it in the year that you cancel it.
Okay.
The money can only be used in a subsequent year.
No, I understand. So it's not so much the number, as my question is, what is miscellaneous revenue, so, what does that entail?
That's what you just said, right?
Miscellaneous revenues can be anything that comes in that we do not have a receivable for.
Okay.
So, basic accounting, you have a receivable for revenue. Let's take liquor licenses. In our borough, we have a dedicated line item for receivable for liquor licenses, but we may not necessarily have a line item for liquor license fines.
Okay.
All right? So if the borough was to bring charges against a liquor establishment and levy a fine, okay, and say the fine is $500, the clerk can't put it in liquor licenses because it's a dedicated receivable. So that would go into what is known as MIRNA, which is miscellaneous revenue not anticipated throughout the year.
Okay. And that's part of the general, I've been looking at Sheet 10, and that's, unless maybe I'm reading it wrong, but that's general capital fund balance?
That's your capital surplus that you're bringing into your budget.
Okay.
Under a miscellaneous revenue. So it's funds that will come into your budget.
Yeah. Because it's under here. I'm looking at my, my. The way that it's written, it's under miscellaneous? It's under miscellaneous, I'm like, okay.
On Sheet 10.
Yeah.
Like anticipated revenues?
Right. Right. I just, that's why I'm a little confused.
Well, there's all different types of revenues.
Okay. Right. So you're seeing a mishmash that we have left over in surplus goes, and that we didn't spend goes into the general capital fund.
You can bring it into your, no.
No.
You're bringing the general capital funds excess revenues into your operating budget, is what you're doing. The reason why, why it's listed on the miscellaneous revenue is because it's not necessarily a reoccurring revenue.
I see.
All right? So you don't want to establish a receivable for something that may not keep happening.
That's why they put it in the category miscellaneous.
Okay. Got it. Okay. Um, yeah, I have a question. I'm going to look through. I think, I think that was my major question.
I have a question, Congress President, we're the Finance Chair. So we talked about that there's surplus, right? The question that I had for you, you know, how do we end up with over $2 million dollars?
I've got some of those answers.
Okay.
I tried, it was last minute, but, no. I don't mean that, I mean, questions come up, new questions come up all the time. I don't mean that, I mean, questions come, new questions come all the time. Okay. Um, okay. Are you ready for one?
Ready for the question?
No, the answer.
Yeah, I'm ready for the answer, yes.
Okay.
Well, maybe for the public's sake, to say what the question is.
Sheet one, okay, um, on sheet...
I believe it was the second to the last.
Thirty-five, I think it was sheet thirty-five. And again, guys, I'm not a CFO, and I'm not an auditor.
The appendix.
I'm just, I think one of the best I can is trying to learn. It's a very difficult document. On page thirty-five, Councilwoman O'Callaghan had a question this afternoon about how our surplus, December thirty-first, was two million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, twenty-seven, when we started on January first with a surplus of a million, eleven, one forty-four. Correct, Council?
Yes.
Okay, so I asked our auditor, late, very late today, I got an answer. I'll explain this the best that I can. Okay, the positives are that we had two million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-five cents in surplus. That came from four hundred and thirty-six thousand, ten dollars and thirty-nine cents from miscellaneous revenues anticipated that exceeded the budget, so that was extra, that much. Unexpended balances of budget appropriations of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred, eighty-five dollars and seven cents. Miscellaneous revenues not anticipated are fifty-four thousand, fifty-eight dollars and ten cents. Unexpended balances of prior year appropriation reserves is four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, forty dollars and nine cents. Prior year inter-funds returned in two thousand six of five hundred and one thousand, eight hundred, seventy-one dollars and seventy-one cents. Statutory excess of animal license fund of one thousand, three hundred, forty-four dollars and sixty cents. Cancelled trust reserves of twenty thousand, twenty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. And net deferred school tax of seven hundred, thirty thousand, one hundred, seven dollars increase in school taxes. This is not cash surplus. Negatives totaling thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and nine, sixty-eight. Deficit in delinquent tax collections of one thousand, one hundred, thirteen dollars and thirty-four cents. Tax appeals, sixteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents payments of excess of capital and appropriations. Bank fees of eleven dollars and ten cents, and prior year expenses of twenty-one thousand, three hundred, sixty dollars and forty-six cents of unaudited prior year's bills. So the net addition to surplus available, which is what your question, I believe, was, Councilwoman, calculates two million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred, thirty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents, which is the number, right?
That's the two million, two fourteen.
Yeah. These are unaudited numbers, by the way, and he said to be clear, so this is as close as I can.
Okay. Can I ask for a favor? It's really hard to follow numbers when you're just, like, reading, you know, out loud. Can I, can you share that information with me? After the meeting? I don't need it right now, but I'd just like to know.
Sure.
So basically, everything we just read ties into the two point two.
Yes.
That was the December thirty-one, two thousand sixteen surplus.
Right, and if you remember, at the last meeting, I know Paul was, and I have time to go through all of that, that he gave us a number, you know, on revenues and what he felt we shouldn't, like, see, remember I told you, we talked about, that was the basis of that last meeting?
Yeah.
When we talked about all the capital projects, and we talked about how we had more surplus this year, and...
Right. So did you clarify that the third thing that he had mentioned? Remember when we talked on the phone, we had remembered that he had mentioned the commercial floor fees and...
That all goes into...
So the third, it's all miscellaneous?
Remember that MIRNA that we were talking about?
Yeah.
Miscellaneous revenues. I didn't ask him what those are, it's a collection of many different things.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor, excuse me, I'd like to report that Councilwoman Versa came into the meeting at six forty-five PM.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
We have a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Yes, Councilwoman Wu seconded it.
Oh, the flip sheet?
Number sixty-five. Is this the whole thing, or just? We are adding a resolution that we did not, we missed it at time of printing, and it's Resolution seventeen sixty-five requesting the approval of Director of Local Government Services to defer school taxes. In your packet is a copy of the resolution, it's not on the agenda. Like I said, we missed it at time of printing. We'll do this one first, then, and that is Resolution sixty-five.
I have a question before...
Sure.
Before we vote. So why are we deferring it? The clerk, this is done every year, so I don't have any idea. The clerk can have the answer to this question.
It's part of the budget. It's something, it's given to us by the auditor. And like I said, and when I printed it, the package, I didn't have it with me, I apologize. But it is part of the budget document.
Okay, so this, we do this every year?
Yes.
Apparently, at some point, the Menace County years ago adopted this process. Once you start this process, you cannot stop it because it will tie for several, it will impact taxpayers. So apparently, at some point years ago, when the state allowed for this, the town started to participate in it, and it's only meant for local cities. So they, the town, joined this program. Why? I'm not really certain, but it has been going on, and you really can't stop it because then once you stop doing this, it will affect your taxpayers.
And it's always fifty percent of what's actually owed, is that?
There's a calculation based upon what the school budget increase is. That's what it's based upon.
Okay, and in fairness to our clerk, she just received it right before our meeting, so it wasn't like she missed it, it just came in.
So we'll start, then, with Resolution sixty-five. I need a motion.
So do you.
And that's a second, why, Councilwoman Wu?
Wu, Wu Park.
Okay, Wu. Uh, Councilperson Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
Okay, so that is sixty-five. Now, we have sixty-three. Should we just do it again? Councilperson McMorro?
Just to have a motion.
Yes, I need a second?
Second.
Gotcha. Okay. This is for the actual budget resolution, which has two hearings. Today is the first one. The second one is on the eighteenth. Council, Councilperson Versa?
I hope no, because I don't need to...
Okay. E. Park?
I'm gonna abstain.
O.?
I'm going to vote no, because, you know, we were, this council was clearly told that we have the money in the budget to be able to pay for a full-time administrator and a full-time rec director. And it's clear to me from the budget that we have to raise taxes to pay for these, you know, new hires, so I'm gonna vote no.
Okay. I disagree with what you said.
Right, this is on the... McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor, we have three yeses, two nos, and one abstention.
Right.
Hold on.
You recognize?
Yes. Councilwoman, I have to tell you, I'm a little disappointed in your no vote. Councilwoman Versa, you as well? I mean, I could see, I know you have a right to vote anyone you want, but I have to tell you, and you missed my introduction. I have given you guys every opportunity to call me, I said I would meet with you, nobody, I mean, nobody wanted to meet. You said you wanted to meet, and then I would have been so today, and then at the last minute, I needed myself available for you, every step of the way, all of you. And to vote no on an introduction of a budget, that, as a group, so much time and effort is put into by the employees, the staff, the department heads, without giving any ideas at all, I just think is, is just totally against what you're elected to do. You're elected to participate, you're elected to come up with ideas, and if you have something to say other than raising forty-eight-dollar tax increase, when I just read a list to you of what contractually and state mandated to increase the budget by, and we have an eight-dollar tax increase a month? So are you saying that you don't want recreational growth? Are you saying that you want to lay employees off? Are you saying that you don't want the tax appeals to be paid for within the budget? Are you saying that you don't want the terminal leave payments to not be paid within the budget, which is what we did this year? Because we can, we can do an emergency appropriation, Councilwoman, if that's what you would like to do, and then the taxes won't go up. We can lay employees off if that's what you would like to do, and then the taxes won't go up. But I don't appreciate, my opinion, a no vote from any of you, without giving ideas on how to improve it. It's not fair to the individual that's sitting here that you're now saying you're voting against this budget because her salary is causing a forty-eight-dollar tax increase, when her salary is not causing a forty-eight-dollar tax increase. The items that I read, also to all of you, and I'll read them again, the reserve, the increase in reserve on collecting taxes, the increase in insurances, group insurances, litigation, the need for the planner, for the planning board, terminal leave, paid within the budget, for everyone that got terminal leave, the increase in our pensions, the inclusion of our tax appeals that we, that we have, an increase in accumulated absences, and the increase in our capital improvement fund. I'm sorry, I have to say that? You know, come up with good ideas, all of you, if you want to vote no, and be negative, all right? And don't play politics up here. I'm very disappointed with what I have to say.
Okay, well...
You know, I wasn't gonna say anything...
I was speaking, hold on, I was speaking. What I would say is, look, if you come to a meeting forty-five minutes late, and you vote no on something, that's not a good reason to vote no.
It's not your mind's business, why would it?
If you have a reason to vote no, then I think the public deserves to hear that reason why you voted no. I'm sure you had a good reason for not being here on time.
I'm sure they were.
But you also have a responsibility to the borough and to its residents to carry forward this town's business, okay? And if you're not able to do that, then you should rethink everything. The other thing I should add is that a lot of this budget, the vast majority of it, is tied up with contractual obligations that I inherited last year and I'm still dealing with. And a lot of it doesn't make sense. Councilwoman Versa, it was on your watch. Councilwoman O'Callaghan, it was on your watch. We have a lot of obligations that are contractual, that make absolutely no sense in our society that we should have those obligations the way they have been structured. And that's politics also, that's why that happened. So we're not gonna stay up here and be political, we're gonna do the business of the borough. If you want to be political, you can go outside and be political all you want. Right now, we introduced our budget, it's a great budget for our town, for our children, for our residents, for our seniors, it gives them more services. And I know it's not popular with some folks in here, in particular in that corner over there, that see the money shifting to everyone and not just to a small group, okay? That's what I'm doing.
It's so weird and so...
You don't have the floor, and you won't have the floor.
And you don't want to win the floor.
Okay. No, you'll be asked to remove yourself. We have a discipline meeting, I speak, you had your opportunity, nobody came to the microphone, okay? Anything else?
Can I have the floor now? You didn't recognize me.
I recognize you, yes.
I wasn't going to say this before Councilwoman brought this up. I am against introducing this budget the way it is, because as, as you have mentioned, Mayor, we have contractual obligations. Only half of the tax increase, out of the hundred and eight dollars, okay? Fifty, forty-eight was up to this governing body, okay? Little less than half. So forty-eight dollars, that was within our control, okay? So it's not the most, as you had just stated. It's not even half.
No, a tremendous amount of this budget, it's contractual obligations, you're missing the point.
No.
Which you are missing the point.
I have the sheet that the Finance Chair has provided.
Now, we do a disservice to our town when we enter into contracts the way you did when you were in charge of the...
Let me show you where it says, within control and without...
No, 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 you're missing the point. The things that are in the contracts don't make sense, and it's costing us money, and it's not fair to the residents. It's about time that our residents are treated fairly, and that's what we are doing.
Okay, I agree to disagree with you, Mayor, but look, you can see, wait, I'm not finished yet. So what I was gonna say, that I wasn't gonna say before, was last year, when Councilwoman Park was the Finance Chair, oh, we pay too much taxes this town, we're going to save everybody money. We got twenty-five dollars savings, okay? Now this year, we're going the other way, we're spending hundred, we're increasing hundred and eight dollars per household. So what changed within a year that we can now spend, we can now increase the taxes?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond, and I know, okay, I know I read this twice, I don't think you want me to bore everybody with reading this a third time. I gave a detailed presentation at the last caucus meeting of how the valuation of the town, of the assessed value of this town went down, and I'm rounding now, guys, if I use a wrong number, please understand that. But it was five million, five hundred and change that the assessed value went down of this town as a whole. And I went into the details about how the commercial properties went down and how the residential properties went up. I told you that that causes a fifty-dollar per household increase on a one-point-two-seven-four million-dollar home, Councilwoman, I just explained that. So that's fifty dollars. The other eight dollars comes from the increase in our assessed value per, in the town. So the assessed value, the median assessed value, went up to one-point-two-seven-four, causing an eight-dollar increase. So now we're at fifty-eight dollars. So actually, before we did anything at all, everybody was getting a fifty-eight-dollar increase.
Okay.
So we have forty-eight dollars. So what I'm asking to you is, I didn't, all of this, sorry about that, all of this information has been provided to everyone all along, and I've got emails, I've copied on everything. I have heard nothing from any of you of what your ideas were on this budget. Zero, zero. All I'm hearing you now is saying, I don't want a forty-eight-dollar increase. Okay, listen, I'm open right now. Tell me right now what you want to cut from this budget to get it down to zero, because you've all had it as long as I have. I want to hear from each one of you, what would you cut from this budget? Just tell me. You want to cut recreation?
No, I don't, no, no.
I want to hear this. I want, I want the answer from each one of you, what do you cut?
Now, why don't you start with me?
Go ahead, start.
Okay, so the first thing is, I go to no on two salaries that we already put in, right? That's the first thing.
Which, first of all...
Second thing, second thing is, you better have more money in the, and this is why I asked you, Councilwoman, for the breakdown of the borough attorney and labor attorney, because there's, there's a rumor being spread, and I don't think it's rumor, I think it's actually fact, that is being said by our police commissioner over there, that he's going to open up contract negotiations, just what you said, Mayor, that the contract you have with the police is a bad one. And that this is, that this is what's going on, it's gonna be opened up, that's the word that's being out. If it's not, I hope, I hope it's not, but it is.
Is that what you want to do?
But if it is, I hope we're having, we put more money in the labor attorney's budget than that.
Ask the Councilman, who?
That's fine.
Mayor.
And if we're not gonna do that, can we stop talking about it?
You don't have the floor anymore.
I just did.
So you can respond to Councilwoman Versa.
Sorry, there's been no discussion with the labor union, who's funding regarding reopening negotiations.
That's not what I said.
Okay, just, can you repeat one more time?
I said that right now, the police and other people in town believe that you are saying that you are going to fix the contract that is a bad contract with the police, as saying that you are going to fix the contract that is a bad contract with the police, as the mayor just stated, that it's a bad contract.
That's a false narrative. We've honored the contract.
I didn't say we didn't.
We've honored every single thing in every contract last year, I'm very happy to say. Councilwoman O., you can respond as well.
No, I've, I've never made a comment regarding that we're gonna fix the police contract, not to any of the residents in town, that it was a bad contract.
Right, and if you're...
Oh, it's a great contract?
Well, and if you're, and if you're spreading that, and if you're spreading that rumor, then you're doing a disservice to this council, and to your residents, and to your town.
So, are you telling me it's a great contract you have with the police? I, I agree.
No, I, I don't like the contract, but we're living by it, because that's a contract, that's what you do with contracts.
So, then we're not just talking about opening it up, right? And we don't, and then I don't need to ask for more money to be putting the labor attorney's budget up.
No, what you need to do is come to our meetings and talk.
I just want to make sure I understand, Mayor, that you're telling me it's a great contract that we're doing.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I control the narrative here when I speak, but you...
Of course you do, you control everything.
The narrative is that, I don't like that contract, but we're not opening it up. You're spreading that rumor, and I know it's a, I know it's a campaign year for you, but that's not, that's not a winner for you.
Don't forget it either.
That's not a winner for you.
You already started, you're crap.
That's not, oh.
Mayor, may I, uh...
Wait. You apologize to the, to the audience, not to me.
I apologize to the audience.
For using that word.
What word?
She already did.
No, publicly, you should, you should, you should conduct yourself as a councilman.
What word are we talking about?
I'm not gonna repeat it.
I didn't curse, I did not use it in my voice.
No, it, it was, it's not acceptable terminology, okay? I know you have, I know in the last fifteen minutes you've been trying to catch up, but look, you know, this is a good budget, you, you should support it, because it does a lot for the people in this town. Uh, it might not do a lot for the people who control you and your party, but it does a lot for this town.
But we're not gonna talk politics, right, Mayor? We're cool.
Councilman, councilman, okay. Let's go. Councilman, you got your answer, so there's no...
That's right, so just don't worry about it, we voted our way, I voted my way next there. Don't cry over, don't, don't be disappointed, that's how it works.
I'm not disappointed, but having something productive of how you would get to a forty-eight-dollar increase.
One of the, one of the things that...
You're out of order, and, and I'm not, Mayor, no...
Yeah, they are out of order, but they seem to do whatever they want. Look, you know, here, here's the thing, everyone, and I was very happy with the way that the budget process was conducted, okay? Uh, we had public hearings, we had emails amongst us, everybody was involved, everybody was invited, and I, I think the first comments from councilwoman O. came today at two P.M. The first comments from councilman Versa came, as I'm hearing it, eleven o'clock last night and now. Uh, this has been going on since the early February, late January.
Mayor, we're distracted here. I would like to hear from each member, what would you do to get it down to a zero? Just give me, what would you cut? You obviously want to cut something.
I already, I already told you a couple of things.
Councilwoman O. stated that she doesn't want a forty-eight-dollar tax increase.
No, you're putting words in my mouth.
You can't control the forty-eight dollars.
You are putting words in my mouth.
You said you couldn't...
Okay, you're very good at that.
What would you like to cut?
And this is not political, right, Carol?
Not at all.
Right?
What would you like to cut, councilwoman O.? What would you like to cut?
Before you spend money, you want to know you have enough to spend.
Right, but we...
We are going out to hire people, and now we're increasing taxes?
So, you want to cut people?
But the forty-eight dollars...
You're putting words in my mouth, too.
Well, look, we've been at this for two months, now you're saying that you want to cut things.
Okay, it doesn't matter what ideas I have, because you're not going to...
What are your ideas? What are your ideas?
I've, I've opened up my...
Give us your ideas.
But I already told you'd like to.
Yeah, you want to cut salaries, we got those, two salaries you want to cut.
You know what?
I'm not gonna cut the salaries, I, I didn't want them there in the first place.
Okay, but you don't want those salaries, okay?
So, you don't want...
That's fine, you don't want administrator, and you don't want...
You're putting words in my, in our mouth, because she's not fair.
You don't think...
Well, we already had a rec director, and we had a borough administrator, so don't, don't change yourself, Jack, we already have them.
It's fine, okay, so you want to cut salaries, and then, councilwoman O., what would you like to cut?
I'm not speaking.
Okay, because you have no ideas. Councilwoman Park, what would you like to cut?
You know, I'm new to this, obviously, and so I wish we had more work, the workshops, before just saying, you know, we put this together, here's a revised budget, looking over, you have three days to get back to me, or two days to get back to me, and even today, six o'clock, honestly, I tried my best, and I got here on time, but I am a working mom, I have two little kids, it's very difficult, and I'm trying to make it work, I understand.
No, 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 no.
I understand that.
You've sacrificed your personal life for this.
That's right, I understand that, right?
Okay, this is it, you're here. What do you want to cut?
My only comment, again, is, there's, I'm new, I wish we had more workshops, which I asked for before, I felt that the first workshop was very helpful, it was a very nice discussion, right? But to just say, "Here's the budget,"
That's not what we're doing.
You know, that's exactly sort of what happened.
That's not what we're doing, that's a, that's a...
And then when I ask a question about the cap increase, just tell me to vote, so how can I, you know...
That's a false narrative. You have plenty of opportunity to substantively come back to us with comments on a budget draft.
And I, I'm more comfortable speaking in public, rather than having to, to reach out at this point.
Well, what would you like to cut? Well, publicly, now, you're speaking publicly, what would you like to cut?
Well, I mean, I don't know, I mean, what happened to the two-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand that was supposed to be in the budget last year, that's not in the budget? Now, there's a surplus of a million dollars that we, apparently it was in miscellaneous from two thousand and, uh, sixteen, like, I don't know, you know, I have questions, right? And so, that's why I'm abstaining from the budget.
So, what would you like to cut?
But you're asking me a specific question, when I can't even grasp the general patient of this budget in the sense that I don't know where the money's coming from, I don't know where the money's going, we've asked the same questions again before at the workshop, where did two-hundred-and-ninety-five go? Why wasn't that in the budget? Why is there a million-dollar surplus? And if we have a surplus, why do we now have to raise taxes this year? Why can't we use a surplus to lower taxes, so...
Because we're prudent, you know, you're a good councilwoman.
I want to say this as respectfully as I can. You are on the hiring committee.
Yes, and...
Okay, hold on, please, you were on the hiring committee. You recommended to hire a new administrator, you made that recommendation, so how can you, to sit here and, and say, the sum of the things, money's finished, please, I didn't interrupt you. Councilwoman, on February first, you got this draft budget workshop. I, I can't help it if you don't understand how to read it, but you got it, and it had everything except for two pages, there were only two subsequent pages that were added to this, okay? So, if you needed help, I repeatedly said to you, while we met as committee members to hire, okay, I said, Ellen, whatever you need, I'm here, calling, I will help you, I will help you. But to say I need to ask questions in public doesn't make sense, because if you don't understand, why, why do you wait until you vote to say that you don't understand and ask questions? You need to get yourself up to speed beforehand so you can vote, and take a position, that's why you were elected, not to abstain.
Look, to do our jobs properly up here on the dais requires a lot of time and commitment, okay? Everyone has personal life, everyone has jobs, but when you're up here, you have to do your job, this is the job, you're serving your community, you ran for office, yes, it's a lot of fun campaigning in Englewood Cliffs, and you won, but this is the job that you have to do, and, and Carol went out of her way to give everyone an ample opportunity to comment, to review, to interject, to question, to give ideas.
I resent the fact that you think we're not doing a thousand and three of your budget.
I have the floor.
That's ridiculous, ridiculous.
No, 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 it takes time, it takes time, not just soundbites to the audience and to the press, okay? You have to actually come here with substantive, well-thought-out questions, okay? And, and we gave everyone a great opportunity to do that, and we wanted to give everyone that opportunity. We don't hide things, we want full transparency, we want everyone involved, and, and you know what, and that's what we did, and this is what you have, very proud of it, and, and you know, let me tell you something, it's one thing to be up here and, and take all the shots that we take, but it's another thing, Carol spent hundreds of hours on this budget, and Catherine's only been here two weeks, and she's spent just about all the time that she had on that also. So, I commend everyone who worked on this, and I, I implore everyone who didn't, that next year you'll have a shot again to do your jobs, or not.
Can I have, can I have the floor? Um, so, we've heard from the mayor, and the finance chair, and, you know, this side of the room, I haven't heard from councilman Park and councilman Wu, what do you guys think about this budget?
They voted in favor of introducing...
No, we're having a discussion.
What have you missed?
I'm asking them a question, do you mind?
You could ask them, if you guys want to answer, you could answer, otherwise you could just...
We talked about this, and the increase faced by, you know, certain metrics like CPI inflation, we thought that forty-eight dollars was very reasonable, it shows an increase in percentage of the overall taxes that people are paying, and, you know, I did go through it with Carol, I did go through it with the auditor, and, you know, I fully support the ideas of being our new recreation director, as well as the administration.
All right.
I'm staying in opinion, and we get, you know, professional optimism, office, and related, because I personally look at Carol, she's been a tremendous job in here, so, you know, that's a remedy, that's, you know, I think that is professional, we need to hire, that's true, for the long-term, you know, view, we need, please understand that, that's my personal opinion.
So, what changed from two years ago to now, when you ran your campaign, that we were paying too much taxes, and now the taxes are coming up?
There is this, this forty-eight-dollar...
It's not just forty-eight dollars, it's hundred and eight dollars that's going up per, uh...
Well, I think it was nine-hundred dollars when you were in charge, right, so...
I didn't ask you, Mayor.
Yes, and I, I get to talk when I want to talk, that's the beauty of being mayor.
You're very good at interruption, by the way.
For that to you, my personal, I'm fully supporting what you said, for both of you, please accept that.
Okay, and when you do come up with some substantive reasons why you don't like the budget, we're all ears.
And I'm, I'm glad you brought up transparency, because I actually have a copy of that letter that was sent to you, it said Mayor, Council, and LG, from the residents of Englewood, should I send it to the press?
You should.
Really?
You should, because you know what, you could also send the email that came on, which was directed to only me.
That's okay, it's attached to a letter.
I'm not your secretary.
And that's fine.
Wait, this is, I have something productive, can you guys please...
What, what, what councilwoman Park is alluding to is, the residents on Van Noston were upset with construction on the LG site, so they reached out to me. There was an email addressed to me with a letter attached to all councilmen, council members, and LG, I forget who else was on there. I assumed that everybody got a separate email. I got my email, I dealt with it, we had a meeting with LG, everything went fine, the residents, I would say had about eighty-five percent or eighty percent of their concerns resolved at that meeting, or before that meeting, the other issues are, are being worked on right now. Councilwoman Park is making an issue of this, because she has nothing else to talk about right now, so we, we will move on. Can I move on to the next resolution, seventeen dash sixty-four, authorization to transfer appropriation reserves? Second, please? Yes, well, can we have a vote, please?
Councilperson Versa?
Abstain.
E. Park?
I'm also abstaining.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Four yeses.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, it's unfinished, new business, it's a special meeting, so council members need to just stay within the, the agenda items here. I don't have anything, does anybody else have anything unfinished or new business? Okay, can I have a motion?
I have one, too.
Yes, did we ever get a, an answer, a cancer, about sunshine's role in the election?
Uh, I, I believe I answered it at the last meeting, that, that the, the reference that councilwoman Park was making, was making, did not appear to have been a violation of OPMA.
I think one of the, one of the things you stated was that no, that, since no action was taken, but I don't think that is, because I looked at, I looked at, and it doesn't say that, it's true, I will say that action has to be taken, to be violated.
I understand that, I understand that, but the, the main point of the open public meetings, that is to advertise a public meeting, and make sure the public is informed that formal action should be taken. I mean, I, I think that going forward, and I would counsel each of you, that there should not be any meetings between council members and anyone else that exceeds three people, that's the easiest, safest way to handle it, and that goes for phone calls, emails, where the whole group is on, there should not be discussion, there should not be a decision made, especially a decision made or action taken unless it's in an open public forum. So, it, it's my opinion that that particular description was not a violation of the OPMA, but I counsel you guys not to do that. I would prefer that you stick with two, and at a max, three council members, in any form of communication.
Yeah, that just was not my understanding, my understanding is, any time you meet, it's, it's violated.
No, it's, it's really, uh, many of the cases really hinge on whether you take, whether your formal action has been decided, a decision has been made, and, and that's not the case in this particular matter.
So, are you saying that at that meeting, there was no action that was made?
My understanding is, I wasn't at that meeting, but my understanding is that it was an interview process for Ms., Ms. Stine, that's my understanding.
She wasn't offered a position at the, at the meeting?
Uh, not...
I'm asking a question, I, I wasn't there, so I don't know.
I wasn't there either, but...
I'm not forcing everybody, because she's an employee, um...
We're not talking about her.